All your thoughts and topics on your economic development. Okay, let's uh. Let's talk about here Bob. With Lake Point. Sometimes the key stone conversation, not always, but maybe today huh? Who is who there?
I think several of you asked for it to be on.
Oh yes.
And then he's under. So. So we, I'm not passing anything out, but um we, as I see it, we do have a roadmap for Lake Point and that's the CSDP extension agreement that you've approved on the 29th of December. And so this lays out milestones that they are supposed to accomplish. One of which is coming up really soon and that's a multidisciplinary work session, AKA charrette. And they're looking to do that now not in February, they're looking to do that in early March. So that's going to be a pretty key milestone for them to complete. They're also supposed to by, by November 30th, they're supposed to have an outreach and public input plan for communicating with the partner. They're also by November 30th, they're supposed to more fully develop a site concept to visually depict natural and public spaces, roads, and the various uses of the site. And then they're also supposed to work with us to enter into a general agreement with the city that generally defines the parameters of the project and how we're going to work together and path forward. We're thinking that that general agreement should come together in the first half of this year. So those are some milestones that are going to be happening here between now and November 30th. And you know, time is money for the developer. That developer, in addition to money to get control of the property, they've been putting significant resources into consultants. And so I think that the more money that they sink into this project, the more time is going to be of the essence for them to move along. So that's kind of my summary with as where we're at. Oh, one other thing is I think it's really important for you as the council to weigh in on the conceptual, the concept drawings of the, of the site. So far that hasn't happened. And they are clearly under the understanding that they can't unilaterally come up with a concept for the site. They have been calling this a partnership and so as such, we need to treat each other as partners. And so you as a city council, as representatives of the community, need to weigh in and help with the development of the concept plan. Also, like I mentioned earlier, they need to have an outreach and public input plan. And that needs to be part of this as well.
Okay.
Alan. The charrette, early part of March. I really would like to be part of that, but we're going to be back at the NLC meeting from the 8th to the 15th, David and Lori and I. So try not to schedule it that week, I appreciate it.
Right now they're looking at, the date they sought out just yesterday was March 8th and 9th.
The other thought I had was ties it back to the last topic before the break and that's Sound Transit. And we've got to identify a location for the parking garage. Which to me logically should be part of the Lake Point development. And so they need, we need to coordinate the two. And the earlier, the better. So the sooner Lake Point comes up with concept plans and gets things laid out and locates that garage, maybe even at the corner or wherever, I don't know. But Sound Transit needs to work with that too.
Yep, and so they'll, they'll have a parking garage. Sound Transit will have a parking garage sighting study that they'll do and that will be one of the first things they'll do. Yesterday when I met with them, we talked about two locations for that parking garage. One is the current location of the parking lot, so they'll just go vertical on top of the current parking lot. And the other location we talked about was Lake Point.
The other thing I wanted to ask about is what, just one of the reasons I asked to have this at the retreat was is there anything we can do as a council, as individual council members, to help this project along? Connections that we can make, put people together, is there anything we can do to help facilitate this? I think one unknown that maybe Widener is not ready for quite yet, but should be thinking about, I think is potential tenants, especially a big anchor tenant. And from that standpoint, I think working with the EDC as well, with Economic Development Council would be helpful to bring somebody big in. I think it would be, if I was Widener, I would rather have one big main master tenant, major tenant, than other boutiques, but rather than 600,000 square feet of boutique stores. That would be a nightmare, I would think. But if you had one major tenant like, if the timing was different, REI for example, I thought would, they were looking for corporate headquarters. This would be wonderful, right on the river, right on the trail, down the hill from the state park, mountain biking, all that stuff. But they hadn't make a move and they've done it. That's federal way somewhere.
Spring district in Bellevue.
Spring district in Bellevue, yeah. Okay, but what can we do to help that along?
Brian?
Well, I just have kind of a follow-up to that. So do, I don't, because I don't know how much is, is Widener, are they looking to us to help partner in a solution or is he, are they going about it solely on their own to try to figure out from a tenant perspective, who they want and who they want to partner with on the business side? Is that, I mean, have they shown a willingness to wanting to work with us on that side of it? Have that side of the equation?
I don't think they're to that point yet. But I'm, I'm just wondering, is there anything we could do to facilitate an acceleration of this? I don't know.
Well, I think that's great, but I think it would be futile unless they're wanting to. That's the, that's why I'm asking the question, because I don't know, I honestly don't know. How much do they want our participation on that side of the equation?
Can I answer that? So one thing they've told us, it was a few months ago now, but one thing they've told us is that the commercial side really isn't their wheelhouse and they're, they may be looking to another developer like Vulcan. That's just an example, I'm not saying it's going to be Vulcan, but another developer that, whose wheelhouse it is to do commercial to provide the commercial development to Lake Point. So if they get to that point, then we'll definitely want to engage whoever that developer is.
Okay, Vulcan, can I answer?
Like I guess, the few site development drawings I've seen look kind of vague. And it seems like what they need to define is, you know, what's that, that sweet spot we call, that the balance between the residential, the commercial, the transportation limits and all those little things, do they even know what they're building yet?
No.
Somehow it feels like if we have some timelines, those timelines aren't specific enough. They haven't answered, if they haven't answered that basic question, it feels like they've been struggling for a year to answer that. They're not going to be able to hit these timelines. That's my concern. They've taken a long time to, it doesn't appear, get to the place where they can give us specifics. I don't know what to do about that, but that's how it feels to me.
This visioning session in early March should tell us a lot. One thing we are hearing lately is that they want to build about 2,000 units of residential. And I think they're still on roughly about half million, 600,000 square feet of commercial. Other than that, we don't know a lot. Hotel. Seems huge.
It'd be miles just to get there on the car floor. Nancy?
I was just going to say that at, at the right point, I think it could be really effective like when a commercial developer partner is on board of offering to have a city collective leadership go with that developer to meet with potential interested companies. Because that's, that always sends a really powerful message.
Yeah. Others?
I can keep going and help? Yeah, so I had a meeting with Ian Widener last week. Yeah, I think it was during the break, just me and him and it was a really good heart-to-heart meeting. And I think we both understood each other as far as where we're coming from better at the end of the meeting. There's a couple of things I emphasized with him. Number one, we're not going to commit to things piecemeal. We're not going to say, oh, yeah, you can have our local share of construction sales tax without knowing the big picture of the project or, you know, there's, I don't want to get caught in the trap of agreeing to certain things and then having it being held against me later. So I said, before we commit to anything, we got to know the full project and the full picture. And the other thing I said was, I cannot get in front of my council on this stuff. I can't get out in front of them. I gotta, my council needs to bring me along more than me bringing them along. So I think he understood that pretty clearly as well. But I did emphasize that, you know, we're still really excited about the project and it's still is a great way for this project to go from industrial light to actually having a really cool downtown and urban village. We talked about the importance of getting some sort of vision established so that we can have something to talk about and a compelling story to tell to the community and to the state legislature and whether, whatever audience we need to be talking to. He understood the need to do that.
Getting back to eventual tenants, you know, I'm not a developer obviously, but I would think there'd be an advantage in terms of having things on parallel tracks. If you could be looking at how many piling you got to drive at the same time you're negotiating or identifying a major tenant. That major tenant might tell you where you need to drive the pilings and how to build a building and what he'd need. And to, I don't know, it just, it just seems to me that if they could, if, if they contracted with Vulcan and Vulcan identified a major tenant for this thing, that would speed things along. And it would make, make it clear as to what kind of facility they need to build for the, for the major, the major tenant that they have. But, but you guys are in real estate side.
Well, and so, and I'll answer that. I would say to my answer would be, I think that's not our position to figure that out.
No, no, I didn't say that, but just, is there anything we could do to accelerate that or encourage that?
I think that we encourage the process to keep moving forward, but I think to try to figure out whether the tenant's designing the, the investments after the building is built or the tenant's designing the structure to be built, I just think that's well beyond where we should be focused. I think that's got to be his, part of his grander vision of what he's looking at. And then I would much rather see us focus on things like just overall densities, public open space, view corridors, things like that. To me, that's personally where I'd like to see our focus be and what type of investment we are.
Well, I, I think we also need to focus on public funding. That doesn't mean give them 10 more citizens dollars. How can we work with the state and other people to get grant money, to get infrastructure built, to do stuff to help them without just giving them tens of thousands of dollars. But, but to surely add, I mean, we've been pretty successful at getting grants for big projects, so let's turn an area we're really pretty good at and, and help them on that way.
Lori?
Well, if there was ever a case for turning a brown field into a green field, I think this is it. And I think that really has to be the core of the story. Michael and I talked pre-retreat, I was telling him about the, you know, to invite the public funding in, you have to have a story. And with Mr. Widener's interest in using sewer, the sewage flow as a potential heat source and, you know, green energy and all that. And then if you don't mind, do you mind telling, and you got excited, you were telling about the lot or the whatever?
Oh yeah, the technology is definitely in place and actually, in a really interesting way, there's a utility down in Thurston County on Bud Inlet, on Puget Sound. It's completely, it's a long story. Short story is redeveloped itself. And one of the things they did is create a partnership with, it started with the Hands-on Children's Museum, which is right next door and it's, and they've created this really beautiful space, a place. And as part of this partnership, this wastewater utility now is heating that place and providing them with water and, and a heat source off of the treatment of waste and, and so on. And in addition to technologies having to do with reclaimed water and all that. So we, we kind of had a conversation about that. It's a particularly interesting story in a number of ways because what's happened down there because of that one partnership is a number of places are now wanting to relocate down there. If you get a chance to see this place, space, it's beautiful, but now apartment builders have come in and they're essentially turning this, it's a fill area actually, you know, where the, the water side of Olympia is all fill. And now this is getting redeveloped, a hotel is planned for that area, the Hands-on Children's Museum is there. They're kind of just going on and on. But they have partnered in a way to provide, this is a free heat and Thurston County courthouse, adjunct to that, courthouse system was contemplating moving down there and also creating an ability to literally heat these buildings with this, so it is something that's definitely happening and doable and that story is kind of interesting because it's taken this area, in some ways there's some real parallels now, I think about, I haven't really thought about it like this. To yours' scenario and the, you know, it's an area that was industrialized, right on the water, a number of pollution issues and so on, Department of Ecology was heavily involved, actually there was a consent decree. We got, they got, Governor Greg Ward was ahead of ecology and it's a long story, but it's okay.
It's pretty much our story, it's okay.
Yeah, so turn it around. And now, this place has kind of renovated itself from being kind of a behind-the-walls industrial place to, it's actually becoming a learning center on a number of environmental and other kinds of issues. So yeah, I haven't actually, I mean, there's a lot of similarities to that. Yeah, anyway, so you have the Arke.
Did the utility own the land?
They did, so what it was, was an old-style wastewater utility. And the, it became in violation of a number of environmental laws, Department of Ecology got involved. Essentially, back in the day, took it over and said, they were under consent decree, they had to do a number of these things to comply with state federal law. So they did that and the, actually the agreement that they have, it's a consortium agreement. People come from all over the world, you learn about that. So LOT stands for Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater and Thurston County. So those four jurisdictions actually have combined to create and own collectively this wastewater utility. And so, and, and just the agreement itself is, 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 is pretty interesting. But then through a number of important leadership initiatives, not unlike things that you've done, they've taken that from being sort of an industrial behind-the-walls kind of thing and developed a really beautiful place down there. They have a, they're heavily into reclaiming water now and so they're, you're running purple pipe to a lot of areas in addition to the high and low heat loop that they use to heat their space. They're heavily involved in reducing their footprint when it turns to, comes to energy, electricity consumption in particular. So they just have a number of these initiatives underway. And the result of that has been, you know, people now go down there to find out how they're doing it and, and hear, you know, hear their story. And they've done a lot of that through partnerships, I mean, just actually, and so the, the space itself has changed so dramatically that they have now gone from just being this really industrial place had a wall with wire on it, literally, and you had to answer your phone to get in, to now they have a wet center that's, all the schools in that area go to, it's a teaching center for kids, it's kind of, I don't know. And they're actually, they're under, in a conversation now with the state to potentially provide reclaimed water to, to irrigate all the state lawns and areas. So it's, that's an interesting story. It's really worth, it's really about some point, but yeah, we did speak about it together, so. Other things on Lake Point?
No, I like your message Lori about really just kind of be creative with technology and ways to get the cost down and have it be green all at the same time.
And I think that the legislative standoff, that we, there were two things from our legislators and they talked about, talked about more than Lake Washington, what was it they said cleanup, I actually wrote it down. But they had a phrase that there was a couple of times they were saying that because they were kind of encapsulating, I'll, I'll find it.
It was ecologically friendly, but I don't remember the exact phrase.
Yeah, I wrote it down, but anyway, I'll look for it, not, you know, whatever it is. But I think that, I think that there's some, there's some phrases that, that this idea of this cleanup and reclamation and, and all that, you know, creating a healthy environment for the north. Healthy, I think it was something like healthy, healthy north, healthy Lake Washington or healthy North Lake Washington, I had that help in there. But I, I think, you know, there's, there's something there, you know, you know, get the cool factor with all the cool technology and of course, you know, going from that and building to green though.
A number of you pointed to Lake Point particularly to be on the agenda, I want to make certain that we've, we've talked about all the, or answered questions that you have. Any other updates or anything else you want on this one? Okay, all right. Let's go to downtown issues and topics, a number of those. Parking was raised in a number of ways. If I remember, I think, I think Alan, you might, but, but there are a number of you raised it. This is from a standpoint that as the suburb grows, where are we going to park?
Yeah, with the, with the increase in residential housing, the multifamily stuff, what's, what's the requirement on Spencer 68? Is it 1.6 parking spaces per unit? Is that what it is? Something like that?
Spencer 68 is 0.9.
Only 0.9 for all that, okay. And do they get, do they have to, do they have to pay for the parking? And it's spilling over on the streets essentially. I think it seems like since, since that was rented, we're getting more parking down the streets. Neighbors are complaining and it's difficult. And the more housing we have, when the link building opens up, it's going to get even worse. Now, is it the city's responsibility to provide housing for all these people? I don't think so. But the same token, it's, they're parking on city property. We've increased the number of street parking spaces by restriping 68 there. But still, you know, I see an ever-increasing need and I just don't know how we're going to deal with it.
Brian?
I've been talking to the managers of the Spencer 68 about the parking issue and they're, they have, in their lease requirements, you know, how many parking stalls are assigned to each unit. And some of the problems that they're getting are, some of the people have multiple vehicles or they have a couple of roommates and they have, you know, multiple vehicles between a couple of roommates. And so that's what is really driving the overflow of parking is just all the cars that, you know, people have nowadays. So I think that when, you know, there's less and less parking around, people may not tend to have as many cars if they don't have the work for them.
Or not rent there.
Or not rent there, right.
Okay. Milton, Lori, Nigel and Rob.
So just to give a different perspective on the cars parked down there at night. I look at it and say, cool, this feels like a downtown should feel. There's parking spots and there's cars in them. That's what should happen at night.
The hours are sleeping.
Yeah, it's all residents.
As long as they leave, as long as they leave in the daytime, some other things that happen, I'm okay with that. Now, if they have three people and they're, some places park their car all day, that would be a problem, but we'll have the short-term parking. So I'm actually, I'm okay with that. I think we're to transition, so most of us are used to driving a car. And so you have three roommates sharing and they all have a car. We haven't moved to the world yet where most of us say, you know, I can really get around with that bus, with public transportation.
With Uber.
With Uber.
Or an automated vehicle.
Yeah. So I think it's, it's going to take a transition to, to provide such good transit and it might not happen until 2014 when we get the better bus service where people can say, I can live in Kenmore and not need a car. But right now it'd be difficult to live in Kenmore and not have a car. So I think there'll be a bit of a squish for a while, but I, but I think some of it, the people who want to be in that kind of environment would choose to be there. So I, I actually like seeing all the cars down there at night.
Okay, Lori, Nigel and Rob.
So I actually, my initial response was similar to see a council member Curtis, wow, we actually have to discuss parking. We have it downtown. That's what we were told, when you have, you know, when you have to abstract those lines and make extra parking, you know, people are coming. But one question I get asked all the time is, for the Spencer 68 people, do they have to pay, do you, do you know this Brian? If they have to pay extra for the parking? Because what I hear from the, the library staff, that's a whole other issue on parking is, you know, they don't want to pay a parking charge so they park on the street for quote free. Any, any ideas?
I think they do charge for the parking and a benefit that they have to pay for.
When I lived on Capitol Hill, I had to do that. That was 30 years ago.
Now, the second, second question is all, is all their, they provide parking?
They provide some parking. Not free.
But if you pay, it's just a pay for it, right?
Right.
And so is, is all their parking slots full, should I say?
Yeah, no, I, I don't know. I don't go in there at night. You're just streaking around.
That's the way you said that.
It's a bad area of town.
It's town test, you know.
Nigel, Rob.
I know where I'm going tonight.
Nigel?
So as the person who lives closest to all of this and is most directly impacted, I actually think things are generally okay. I mean, if people need to walk a block to park their car, I don't think that's the end of the world. And that's the way it is in a lot of places where it's getting denser and that's, that's okay. I don't think it's really anybody's business whether Spencer is, is charging their folks for parking or not frankly. You know, that's between them and the renters and, and if they weren't charging for parking and just giving everybody a spot, then the people who live there who don't have a car and people can live there without having a car, if they work downtown, you can get a bus down there really easily. Then those people are essentially subsidizing everybody else who owns a car. So this is, it is a error way to go about kind of pricing what people are using. You know, I think once we get the time-limited parking, you know, during the day, that's going to make things a lot easier for the businesses and hopefully they'll come there and we'll get people moving around a bit and we'll keep parking available for folks during the daytime when businesses are open. I think that's really the, the important part at the end of the day. You know, residents can park a block, a block with, and you do a block in. It's not the end of the world, but we're not, we don't live in a, with the density coming in, people can't, you know, people can't expect to be able to park directly in front of their house anymore. So it's just a reality of kind of the growing region that we have. And it's a good thing because there's people who are living downtown which will build on everything else that's going on there and make it into something vibrant and not just a, yeah, and, and more than just kind of a mall location or something. It'll be something where people are living and investing and spending time. I think that's a good thing, so. Be really good for the town green, so I'm, I, I, I think Frank, and the other part too is the more we require parking, the higher the cost of housing. the cost of housing, the higher the cost to all this development. And I think our developers that are coming in are smart enough to know that they need to provide a certain amount of parking, otherwise they won't be able to rent, rent their property. You know, but when we require them to build more than that, we're then artificially increasing the price of everything, and especially with affordable housing being the topic that is right now, requiring additional parking can greatly increase the cost of housing. So they're all connected.
Rob?
Alan can take my turn if you want.
My only comment was that when Lori and I toured Whitner's apartments in Woodinville, and I think it's the rest of the council done that, one of the things he mentioned was he's providing two parking places for every unit. Why? He says he doesn't think the people around this area, at least the suburban kind of people, are going to give up their cars anytime soon, and they want that parking.
And he should have the right to do that if he wants. And somebody else should have the right to not provide two, it's even when it's out in the marketplace. But when we step in and say, you're going to have two places per, you know, that's us artificially.
I don't think Woodinville's requirements are two per unit.
No, no, he's going. And that's his, you know, that's perfectly, you know, that's his business decision. But, you know, if we require something higher, then we're artificially inflating the cost of everything. So also, his location isn't within. No, it's kind of out by itself, so.
Okay, Rob and Stacy.
You may recall that at the June retreat, we had a really lengthy and helpful conversation about this, and you guys really actually put me at ease, because I was all stressed and thinking about what we should proactively do to create more parking, and you all told me to chill out and just, let's just monitor, monitor the situation, see what happens when the link comes on and the hangar and everything, and then take a look at it. Because I think the message I got was quit trying to predict what might happen, because whatever it is, you'll probably predict wrong. And let's just, I think I said wait and see, and then you corrected me and used a more technical sounding term than wait and see.
Something like assess and monitor.
Assess and monitor. I'm tired of consulting, that's what we are. But that night, you took a big burden off my shoulders and parked it somewhere.
We don't know where.
Service law structure parking.
Yeah, you can only see it there for four months.
But I was like, oh great, my bosses are telling me I don't have to worry about this right about. Plenty of space. And so that is still the direction I'm going off of, because I think we do need to wait for the link to come online and the hangar and everything. Just one other point, as I'm really grateful that Alan helped organize that Transportation Technology Conference and invited us to, because I learned a lot at it. One of the things I was most fascinated with was Reach Now, which is the BMW company, and they have a lot of different products, but one of them is where like you could take a big downtown area or even like a Lake Point type area, and they can have their own fleet of Reach Now cars that are shared by the tenants. And so instead of providing a hundred parking spots for a hundred apartment units, you could provide fifteen Reach Now BMWs. And those folks can all just hop in those cars and go and, you know, and so it's a shared vehicle concept that will result in less cars, less parking spaces, less trips.
Yeah, and they get to drive BMWs. Sign us up. Maybe one of them will want to be a test. I mean, do you know?
I think so.
But think of it, I mean, am I out of order?
Well, it's Stacy David and Brent and then Lori.
I have a slightly unrelated curiosity question. Since we haven't had too much interest in the restaurant pad, it sounds like, has anybody complained that restaurants don't want to come here because of the parking or anything like that?
That's not the message I'm having.
What message are you having? Kenmore, why would they want to go there? I haven't posted up downtown yet.
I actually have it as an update under other.
Is it there tomorrow?
This, under downtown parking.
Okay.
Or downtown issues.
Okay, well, hold that thought. David?
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with Milton and what other people have said. I mean, it's great to see all the parking down there. It shows activity and things are happening. My only concern is the apartment dwellers will be taking up the spaces in the evening when a restaurant or two leaves that space. Because, and then I can also see, not with Crystal Ball, but when that parking there comes online in the link, that we're going to have the park and hiders come in there, and we're going to get apartment dwellers parking in there that are going to take up spaces, but remains to be seen.
That's a mystery to figure out.
Yeah, right, right.
And we can always adjust the hours so that we have time limit of parking. If it's the fact that, you know, if people aren't able to access the restaurant, you know, we can change it all on one eighty first right there, you know, maybe go to ten or something, you know? If we need to.
Brent and then Lori.
Yeah, well, Rob mentioned, we talked about the midterm retreat, but we also talked about it a year ago when we asked him to have a conversation with Murphy's for their property to see if something, because it was, and that was a concern that I had a year ago, somewhat like Rob. Clearly, I don't have the same level of responsibility he does, but I actually very much remember the conversation over the last two retreats, and it was kind of a wait and see or assess and monitor situation where, because I did feel like it was of higher urgency, knowing that if we want to do something, the auctions run out or are diminished every year because there's more development and pricing goes up. But having said that, it seems like everybody's pretty comfortable with letting things ride.
Lori?
So one of the main issues that we seem to talk about at the library advisory board is the parking or lack thereof. And so we have a new person, that's the manager of the group of libraries we belong to, and so we have, we'll have to discuss that same thing. And so I mentioned that we do have the gravel lot where the Espresso Works is, and she said, is that for leased or just to use? And I said, I will let the staff look that out. But one thing I thought of was, so going back to the library, one of their big issues was the storytime, because they have, it's so well-attended. They have, I don't know, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, I mean, it's an amazing amount of people, and they drive. And so Rob was able to work out a thing where we did the two-hour parking right across the street, and they were really happy to, that they actually, you know, shared parking, because that was the concept, you know? It wasn't everybody out there on little spot, it was, you know, you walk here, walk there. So that's been very successful. But there's still, you know, what do we do, what do we do? So I've been looking at that gravel lot a little bit more, and it does look like people are parking there. And so what I'm wondering is if we need to have some time limits, you know, something there so it doesn't become a de facto park and ride lot, which that's where I park, frankly, if I was going to take the bus and.
Okay. Alan?
Along those same lines, I remember when they were planning that library and Bill Potasik was out and preaching all this, the project he had, and the parking that was there was less than they had in the double-wide library over on Seventy-third. And square footage, per square foot parking was far less than what they have in Bothell. And his answer to that was, Kenmore is becoming a pedestrian-oriented city. People don't need cars to get to the library. But at the same token, they really wanted to be on five twenty-two so they'd be visible from five twenty-two. Pedestrians aren't on five twenty-two, cars are on five twenty-two. So I just couldn't, I couldn't get anywhere with him. He was sitting on so much parking and that little garage underneath.
You know, if you think about with the town, we come down like right across the street are two banks which close at six o'clock, and it would be, maybe there's some way we could work out some type of a situation where those spaces that are just sitting vacant would be used.
Then lock the stoop.
Seeing as how their employees take the diagonal parking.
Right. Exactly. Good point.
Well, and that could be the trade, maybe, trading some.
Bank staff parking day.
Yeah, trade some on the lot. We control.
Rob?
On the Shell property, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if we're actually to consciously turn that into a parking lot movement, we have to comply with our own design standards and do landscaping and all that stuff.
Yeah, it's been a while since we looked at it. It was a couple of years back when we took a look, but there was some regulations that we would have to meet landscaping at a minimum of, at a minimum.
Yeah, front and supremus alone, sixty-seven.
Yeah. So it wouldn't be just, you know, slap down some gravel or some asphalt and start using it.
Red spray paint to mark out car line. There you're done.
The other, the other thing is more on-street parking is going to be added when one eighty-first is done.
I don't know, I don't know the number.
They've told me the number, but I've forgotten, but both on the north and the south sides are going to see additional on-street parking there. In fact, just in front of City Hall, we have this little transition turn lane that it never really ever gets used, so that's going to go away, and we're going to have on-street parking on the south side of one eighty-first right across the street from City Hall.
Wow, that's wonderful.
The parent?
Don't our downtown design standards prohibit parking in the front along five twenty-two? I thought that's why Pacquiao's had to put it in the back. All new developments have to put it in the back, that the buildings have to be up next to the street, and the downtown, yeah, the downtown design standards prohibit that, right?
When we looked at that a couple of years ago, there was flexibility that we could have done it through, but I can't remember off the top of my head what that was and how we got there. But, you know, standalone commuter parking isn't allowed, but I think we got there through calling it, you know, defining it something else of the commuter parking.
Well, that's an interesting way of doing it. I mean, because I mean, the downtown task force spent a lot of time on that, and that was quite, that was incorporated as part of the downtown design standards.
Lori?
Thank you. I think, I think the thing to remember is this lot. I think the thing to remember is this lot is, this is a temporary use of this lot. I mean, we don't ultimately know what this lot is going to be. There's a temporary use business on there, and it's, you know, it's used for staging for the five twenty-two, so I'm not seeing this as any kind of a permanent commitment to anything. It's just an interim.
Okay. Anything else on parking? Okay. Programming for Town Square and Hangar.
Is that Alan? Yeah. I've seen post-its around the walls of their executive meeting room that look like they have ideas for programming of the hangar. And I'd just like to hear from staff as to what they see and maybe get some input from everybody else as to what future uses we might have for, for that facility.
They don't have this public, they don't have a copy.
Is there a handout? Yeah, so that got uploaded to the agenda a couple of days ago.
Did you see the memo?
What it does, there's a memo that's uploaded to the agenda that takes excerpts from the Town Green business plan.
Would you like to read that?
Sure.
Okay.
But it just, it just, no, it's not in your book. It's uploaded a few days ago, but if you have your electronic agenda, you can see it. But it's just a memo that takes excerpts from the business plan that talks about the type of programming. But in a nutshell, we're proposing that we have two city-sponsored events. One is the downtown Y I love Kenmore block party with the Town Square as ground zero for that event. And then the other one is several summer movies at the Green in the summer. So those are the two city-sponsored events. Then what we really want to do is just tap into the community and encourage the community to use the heck out of that building and out of that Town Square. And so marketing and promoting it is going to be a big effort on our part. But we can envision, we're envisioning book clubs, recitals, civic meetings, nonprofits coming and using it for Y M C after-school program, for example. There's a long list that is in that memo that explains all the various ways that people can use it. The business plan also says that it's, that the public will be able to use the space for free. And I think that's going to be an important component to encouraging people to use the space and knowing that it's their free living room space, their third place, if you will.
Well.
I think Lori reminded it before me.
Lori, Milton, and Brent.
So on the, so it sounds like there's not a charge to use, say, the meeting room? Is that what you're saying? Yeah?
Yeah, there won't be a charge to use the, what we call the assembly area or that multipurpose room next to it.
Multipurpose. Well, it'd be, I know the library has a system where you can reserve it, but then I believe they have some limits so that, like, you can't have, like, a weekly meeting or something like that.
Yeah, they say it's like months and months.
Yeah, so that's another thing we're working on, is developing policies around renting it, renting it, so you can't monopolize the space or things like that. Yeah, I got it.
So one other question I have about the senior, the Kenmore Senior Center, are they going to have any activities or program?
We'd love it if they would. One of the things we've built in architecturally is that bank of lockers or cabinets, and we're assuming that one of those would be for the seniors or at least one of them.
I think that would be really important for having something for all ages, and also the fact that there's so many that can walk to it or, you know, be very close to it, whereas even though the other one's not that far away, for some people it is accessible, so that would be great.
I can certainly bring that up in my monthly meetings.
Well, that would be great.
Milton and then Brent.
Mine's the same topic, just making sure that people have a share, a chance to get this space, not somebody get in there for the whole year and they block off.
With a chunk.
Doesn't let everybody else use it.
Okay. Brent?
You know, one of the things from a programming standpoint, it might be kind of funny because we raise awareness, but maybe have like a community contest about for the best idea for something, for an event to be held, to get some creative thoughts. And what it would do, it wouldn't necessarily, the end result wouldn't necessarily be the focus, it would be actually allowing, getting everybody to think about, they've got this new space in the city, we can put it to use in ways. And so there could be more of an ancillary impact that could almost do better in some ways. And the other thing, and I can't remember how this is written or how this is determined, but if there were, who has ultimate authority, is that you, over who? If there's somebody that wants to use it in the community and it's something that maybe falls under the, you have a right, you know, freedom of speech perspective, but it is not an attractive use as a community gathering space, do we have a, is that all addressed? I can't remember.
We will be addressing those policies.
Because it seems pretty significant, not knowing what can just pop up when nobody's expecting.
So the way you get caught with your pants down is by not having a policy. But if you, if you have a policy in place ahead of time that says no hate groups and no these types of groups ahead of time, then you're okay.
Okay, that's what it is. And when is our projected start date right now?
So we're looking like sometime in June is when we'll be.
Oh, exactly, okay.
Yeah, it's a combination of lateness of the contractor and also of the tenant's ability to get up and running.
And so when it opens, that tenant will also be opening at that same time?
Yep. We were, we were playing with the idea of opening the town, opening the Hangar building before the tenant's ready. But we just didn't think that would work because the tenant would be saw-cutting concrete and doing plaster and everything and making a big mess of noise. We didn't think they could coexist with the public.
Okay. Okay. Alan?
One thing that hasn't been mentioned is coffee with council. And I, my visions are that we could expand that coffee with council to have a, a forum where people can, not only just discuss with one or two council members, but, but come forth with ideas like, like Kageyama's, you know, fund and Kenmore thing. What are some ideas? And, and that would, could be a forum for them to do that. And then people could chip in and develop an idea, kind of like startups do with a, with a entrepreneurial idea, that, that they, they work together on things. And it could, the people could feed upon each other's comments. And I could see, you know, designating maybe an hour, maybe it involved a couple hours of a session. Maybe on an evening, maybe in the morning, one in the evening, one in the morning, whatever, where people could come in. And maybe there could be introductory comments about what's going on in town for 10 minutes, things that you should know. But this is the place to go to find out what's going on in town. But it's got to be something that's organized and, and have some structure to it. But I could see it evolving into a great way to get people to come to the center. I'm a little concerned that if we say, okay, we're going to have movies in the summer and we're going to have a, a block party. And the rest of it is for you citizens to do with what you want. I, I just, it's going to be a long time coming, I'm afraid, for people to start using the space like we'd like to see it used. I think we've got to be a catalyst as a city to program it ourselves.
Lori, David and Milton?
Well, I'm really excited about the Hangar building and the coffee, the Diva Espresso. And I, I think it's going to transform our community. I think that it's, you know, the coffee shops have really become, they're new community centers. And whenever you're going to meet somebody, whether it's a person that you, you know, get together with face-to-face or, you know, a lot of times meetup groups will meet on interest and stuff like that. So I think it will, it will be amazing how many people use, use this space. And I think it's going to, I think it's going to be a really unique unifier for a community. Because if not, remember one of the vision, part of the vision was that seeing each other face-to-face. And think of how rare that is sometimes, you know, and actually having a conversation. So I'm really, I'm really excited about it. I really appreciate that. This is a unique model that I believe's been done before, having a public building like this with a part of it.
David, as well.
So Rob, do you envision the outdoor being open before the building, with the rocks functioning in that?
Yeah. Can I give you an update on the rocks down?
Very cool. Does that mean that if they fix them, they should have?
I know, they, they will fix them. But.
Where do you find this contractor? He's called Long Bitter.
State law.
Sort of says we have to do that.
State law.
Third point. But there's some influence down here. You can fix it.
But, yeah, we, one time I, a few weeks ago, they were supposed to be working. So I went and turned them on and about an hour later, I thought an hour was enough, and went and did just nothing. They were all cold. And so a few weeks later, the contractor thought they were working. So I turned them on and I decided wait about three hours. And I was so excited because the contractor said they were going to work. And so I got a couple of my coworkers to come with me. And I said, you got to check out these hot rocks. And so we all go over there and they're just stone cold. So.
How can it be that complex? Aren't they just running an element through it?
Yeah.
But, you know, when we went down to the South Lake Union, those down there, when you put your hand on them, they didn't feel hot. They didn't even feel warm. But you sit down on them, it's kind of like a, a seat warmer in your car. It kind of creeps up on you. Sit down for a while.
So I still have one more. And on this, I had a few days, understanding the movies and whatever. And you're going to have the screen facing the Link building?
I'm not sure it works with face.
I just was reading.
Is that what it said? You can't see the Link building?
Yeah, so that the residents of the Link building could watch it.
Oh, that's nice.
No, I was just wondering.
No, make them come down and watch it from our place.
No, I mean, it's just be different from the street.
That's, that's down on the, on the third page. The movies on Saturday.
These, they are going to get it all perfectly. Oh, good. The contractors will be bound to go and work.
And it's got a function for, you know.
Yeah, Debbie's, Debbie and her chamber working.
Is there like a Yelp for government contractors? In other cities?
So they're still responsible with fees and six months?
Yeah, one year warranty.
One year.
Yeah, one year.
One year, one day.
Can you get an extended warranty?
Yeah, can we buy an extended warranty?
That's called the change.
Okay, let's go. Milton, you're up.
The, the, the idea of talent shows, there are plenty of places where, you know, people talented and non-talented like to show off what they do. And, and it just seems like if we had something, you know, every Friday night at seven, somebody will show up and do something. And just to show up and see what entertainment is. I wouldn't want to take too much of staff time, but at least a designated time. And you'd have to at least schedule it so you didn't have three people all basically coalesce at the same time. But it doesn't seem like it'd be that hard to fill it with, you know.
If you just play instruments.
On a big TV screen, you'll get no line up.
There we go.
Actually, if you.
We got a big screen.
You'll probably get.
Call a talent show and we got the big screen, so we can put their, them up on the big screen too. It seems like we should be all at least fill one, one hour a week with something.
Anything else as it works on the programming?
Uh, just a couple of things. So Alan mentioned something that I would love to see happen. I'd love it to be organically produced by the community. And that's the, that's called different things. And one thing it's called is A Million Cups of Coffee. And I think we'll introduce me to that.
That I brought up last year.
And in Detroit, they call it soup. And what happens is co-creators get together monthly or weekly or whatever. And at the door, they all chip in five bucks or some, some amount of money. And then they all present their ideas of how to create a love note for the community. And then they vote on it and the winner gets the pot. And then they're supposed to go create their love note for the city. And that's what they do. And that's called soup in Detroit. And the million cups of coffee is also similar. I'd love to see that in Kenmore. I'm not, at this point, calling it a city program. I'd love to see, you, you can fill in the blanks on who you, in the community, that could step up and help run a program like that. That would be so cool.
Three school showups. Free your book and $10.
But also, I, my, my daughter takes violin here in Kenmore from a teacher who lives right off of wanting to drive. And he's always struggling for a place to perform for recitals. And we, we go to nursing homes often, which is great. And sometimes we've been in the upstairs room of Mills Music in downtown Vaucluse. Some of you are nodding your heads. We've been there. But he, yeah, he and his peers are always struggling for a good venue to have a good recital. And so he's really excited about this. And he said he'd definitely come and do recitals there. His one requirement is he needs a piano. And so we're having internal arguments on whether to have a piano or not.
Does it have to be a big piano or just a, like, electronic piano? Those aren't pianos.
Yeah, and the technology on those.
Hey, you can leave it out for a bit and lock it up when there's.
You can just leave it out and people might play a piano.
And bang on them.
Kids will bang.
Okay, anything else on this topic? Brian? So this is, Rob mentioned a little bit about fun ideas and putting dollars in the thing. One of the things that came up at the, for the love of Kenworth, it was about that idea of having a big party on the bridge. And this isn't to do with the, with the hangar or anything. But I would like to keep that idea alive for when, as we slowly creep closer to that. I think that'd be a really cool. What bridge? The San Amish Bridge, when it gets to a place.
Oh, you're taking.
Have to take, even if it was just half of, in one other direction, just completely close it down and have a huge city party.
Big block party.
Yes.
It'd be a bridge party.
They lean on it.
Uh, okay. Before we leave downtown, anything else on your programming? And then Rob has something else. Okay, Rob?
Um, so the Restaurant Pad, so Main Street, you know, has been listing that property for almost two years now. And they've really struggled to find a tenant. They brought some pretty well-known type name brands to come see the site, but they think they brought them too early because there was so much chaos on this from construction and things like that, that they, they decided to, they, they didn't like the site when they came to the site. So.
They're getting your print ready.
So anyway, they, they thought they had, they were headed towards a deal with this one restaurateur, but that deal fell through. And it's highly unlikely that they're going to make the March deadline to exercise the option. And for a sum of money, I think it's like $10,000 or $9,000 or something, they can extend their option for another six months. And I'm sure they're going to. They tell me that they have already invested $100,000 into that pad through utility extensions to the pad. So that's a sunk cost they're probably not going to want to walk away from. So stay tuned on that. I don't have any recommendations or forecasts for you. I'm just telling you what I know.
Any questions?
Well, I would say it would be a great marketing tool. If we can hit that June first opening date, then we've got the whole summer. If they extended it six months, that would take them into the fall, where they would have a great opportunity to sell it as an active space in the summer. And it would really show well.
One small correction, I did not say June first. I just said.
Okay. So actually, let's shoot for May. Maybe we'll get.
Alan?
Yeah, but you also said that you could open the outdoor space before the indoor space. So that, would that mean then that all the construction equipment and all that would be off the parking lot for the Restaurant Pad?
Should be.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So it would look like it's going to look when everything's done. It's just, the coffee shop wouldn't be working and the inside of the building wouldn't be. But they would see the opening, the space that they would have, rather than the clutter that you see now.
There's still be clutter over where the missing building is between Link and the town.
But I'm, I'm saying it'd be, it'd be a better visible presentation. Once, once the, the open area is open and the fences are down and the construction equipment's not in between the two.
So the, the Link building, what's the finish date of that one? Or is that, I mean, obviously it seems to me like it would be a positive for a launch.
Uh, they're talking about being finished and ready to start moving people in summer or end of summer. And I've heard they've actually started some leasing. And the area between the Link building and the Town, the, what do you call it, the?
Hangar.
Hangar, hangar, that's what I was going to. It's going to be, uh, graded grass and have some planters in it and have some benches and stuff. So we'll be able to use it until they figure out what they're going to do with it. So that was part of the agreement that we had with them, that they couldn't just leave it as a dirt mess.
That's good care. And they, they also have to complete that sidewalk gap as a condition of completing the Link building.
Correct.
Build them out of parklet?
Parklet.
They need to put little things like that in there.
So Brian, I thought on the Link building, they were going to be ready for the residential components sooner than summer.
Well, last I heard was summer. And that was a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay. All right. And had they turned over the office space to?
We issued a, sorry, there you go. We issued a certificate of completion for the shower and floor of the building. But I don't know if they've actually turned over the space to Evergreen.
Seems like, so we're running behind because of some other projects that we're working on, but we don't intend to move in till October. I think our goal is to not pay lease until we have to. So we'll probably delay that as long as we can, but then still have time to do the build-out. It'll be the next few months that we'll be starting to, to build.
So you said move in in October, though. That's when you're.
Those are very positive values.
Okay. Anything else? Let's move along. Let's talk about adjourned, I guess.
Unless you guys want to go. And then you get out early tomorrow.
There we go. Bank some of our time for the Seahawk. I mean.
Those longer discussions at the end of the day, yes. Okay. So let's, let's do it. Let's talk about transportation. Is that?
Wait, you missed breakfast. All right, we're going to skip right there.
Well, so are we allowed to do that? Are we allowed to talk about something that's for tomorrow or today?
It's posted, yes, posted for tomorrow.
Uh, actually, no.
Six.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
I, I took a few notes at last minute's meeting on, on the seminary project and counted 85 people that offered testimony. And, and you have to understand that there are, I mean, well over 100 that had signed up. But some of them, because maybe similar comments have been made already, they, they declined when it was their turn or they left or whatever. So of the 85, 64, or 75% of those were in favor of the project.
Really?
Yeah. 18 were negative. And two, two people had comments that were really neither positive or negative. One person ended up not coming in because he wanted to talk about the vault.
That's a separate meeting, right?
Anything else before we?
I think dinner's at 6:30. I just wanted to.
You said it's not, and it's not at the restaurant where you used to, it's Oyster.
If, if Oyster, this will attach a hotel where the Melph, where we used to be.
What's that?
If one locked that way and one locked that way.
It's 2:05 watch.
So what was it, 6:30? Yeah, the, the other thing was Melph, we didn't take us at 5:30 or 7:30.
Does everybody know where this is?
I don't. I have a call.
So does everybody know where this place is that we're going to be meeting at? And we need to clarify, is it six or six?
Down on the hill?
Yeah.
Angle?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go. Rob, please.
Okay, so this is my observation, but the, the excitement, enthusiasm level was at its highest just now when you were talking about the Town Green and the programming to go with it. I think that's when the excitement and the fun was at its highest in the room. So to segue off of that, Peter Kageyama is coming back that first week in April. And you may, you may recall that we had a meet with you that Monday and then that Tuesday, a met with the community. We're actually proposing to reverse that this time where he meets with the community that first Monday in April. I think it's April 4th. And then after he meets with the community, then he meets with you and you get the debrief and the recap and next steps and stuff like that on that Tuesday. So reactions to that?
Sure.
You mean the pattern of what you're saying?
Yeah, the Monday, Tuesday.
I think it's great. Yeah, I actually, one of my questions, and I'm so glad that you already had this set up, was how do we keep it going? And I think this is great. And so you're, what you're saying is the community, the co-creators will be a first stop and then we'll kind of hear from them.
You're the council, yeah.
Isn't that the way we want it?
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of really empowering the citizens, I love it. It's great.
Yeah, and I see three purposes of the big event. One is just to refresh your course. Next is to celebrate our successes and progress we made. And then third, how do we take it to the next level? So that's kind of the purpose of the big meeting.
Yeah, great, thanks that I watched that soup idea.
Okay, anything else? Where do you want to?
Uh, Kenmore City Council is now adjourned.